Good evening and welcome to the committee of the whole meeting, October 11th, 2012. I'd like to call to order, and if we could have the rule called, please.
Mayor Ron is absent tonight. Mayor Pro Tim Fleming.
Here.
The clerks here. Trustee Emery.
Here.
Trustee Clubenow.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes, here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Manager Searle.
Here.
Attorneys Emanek.
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Gunther.
Here.
Acting Community Development Director Malik. And Director of Fire Prevention Bureau Daniels.
Here.
And everyone, please rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we have open forum. I would like to read a little thing that I think from time to time, the public should be made aware of also. The participants are advised that open forum proceeding is a privilege and should not be abused. Persons will be recognized, given a chance to speak, and the question or request will be answered if necessary, referred to village staff for response. Rules of order and common courtesy will be rendered and expected. Time limit for each person is three minutes unless previous arrangements with the mayor have been agreed upon. Items that will take more than three minutes should be placed on the next committee of the whole meeting agenda. And by that you can contact the village manager for placement on the agenda. Okay, first up this evening, Mr. Al Carson with Westmont Chamber.
Good evening, sir. How are you?
Fine, thank you. I'd like to pass these out if I may.
Just a moment, please. Mr. Chief, he'll take care of that.
Our assistant, yes. We'll pass them out.
Sir. Thank you.
Ah, geez.
Thank you.
Okay. As you can see, it's that time of year again that some of you who have, not limited this to the young people, but older people, put on their costumes and try to win some of our fabulous prizes. And I know Steve will be right into one of his outstanding costumes this year. With that in mind, again, this event is for all ages, and it will be, again, our fabulous trick-or-treat trail. It'll be on Saturday, October 27th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., of course, in the downtown area, right across from Burr, well, Burlington and Cass Avenue. Of course, everybody is invited. This year, we have a special event that's going to be added on to it. We will be taking photos of the costumes, and we'll be working with Palladino Photographs in La La Lee. Again, these pictures will be taken, they will be posted in La La Lee from October 31st to November 3rd. And you will be able to vote on these pictures by submitting a penny. Now, those of you who probably have grandsons, you'll probably put a $5 bill, and that means you get 500 votes. But for those that want to only submit a penny, that's what's required. There will be awards given, and the real benefactor of this will be our educational foundation. So again, in cooperation with about 48 of the downtown merchants, in addition to La La Lee, working with the photographer, we think this will even enhance the event. Normally, if it's good weather, we get three to 600 out, so we're hoping on a great day. Again, October 27th, from 11:00 to 1:00. We'd like to request sound amplification in case there's any music or so, and we would like to get a third of the parking lot on Cass and Burlington for use. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer. If not, we look forward to seeing each and every one with your costumes, and we will award the appropriate awards to the outstanding ones.
Sounds good. It's always a great event. Ron, do we need to put that on an agenda for Monday for the parking lot issue and the sound amplification? Or can we just...
Sound amplification, I think we just...
We just approved that through the clerk's office, right?
Might have already issued that.
But the third of the parking lot, I think we have.
Parking lot, we have to, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll just do that Monday, then?
Sure, because I do have a written request if we need to submit it to anybody.
Be happy to take it.
Be happy to take it? Okay. And I'll be glad to make sure you get it. Thank you for your consideration, and hopefully we'll see each and every one out.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Bob Mueller, 44 West 59th Street, Apartment D, Westmont, Illinois. Good evening, sir. How are you?
Good evening. But I wanted to, I've attended several sessions of the board's presentation on home rule, and I think it's time to do some clarifications. First, we'd like to talk about how home rule comes about. Comes about when a village achieves a population of 25,000, or the voters approve home rule through a referendum. When voters are asked about home rule, they generally turn it down 80% of the time. Clarendon Hills just turned it down 86 to 14. So what happened in 2007 was the board annexed some land and did a special census to get the 25,000 population. It was a successful end run around the voters, and they started implementing home rule. The first thing that came in was the multifamily ordinance, which is really a tax on about half the people of Westmont. But basically, those 50% are only 20% of the voters, so who cares if they scream and yell? They just get to pay the tax. Then the board took the tourist budget, they merged it with the general fund. That pretty much made sense, because obviously tourism in Westmont is not going to boom. So that was money being wasted. You know, unfortunately, what that does is it sets a precedent for any money to be diverted to a different fund, and that's where the danger is. Then the board implemented gas tax and sales tax on everybody. They say, oh, that's paid by outside people. Well, it's paid by, you know, residents of Westmont, too. I really believe in shopping in Westmont, and so that's a tax I pay, and I pay willingly. But it is not helping the economy of the village. And lastly, the board decided to ignore the property tax cap when they went to fund the police pension fund. Well, the police pension fund is unfunded mandate by the state, which the board says they can ignore, and it's not even due till 1940. So why are we implementing a tax cap, ignoring a tax cap at this point, taxing residents when we really don't have to pay for it yet? Basically, all home rule means is tax and spend, and don't ask the voters. You know, voters will approve taxes if they are given a good reason, but they need to be asked. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And Robert Flauwman, 111 West Naperville Road. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I think we're kind of in the, maybe in the mood for a point counterpoint tonight. I'm here to talk to the residents and the public on my version in regards to the home rule authority. We've heard plenty in the last few weeks about the decision given to the public on if we should retain home rule authority or give it up. Ron Searle, the village manager, has done a good job on getting the word out about what it is and what it is not. Out of a town of almost 25,000 people, the turnouts to these information sessions, or at least the three that I have seen, have been low at best. At last night's presentation, I asked Ron how long we have had home rule. It was enacted in 2007. Therefore, we've had home rule now for five years. Up to a couple months ago, I didn't know we had it or what it was, and as a resident and homeowner of this community, it obviously didn't impact me in ways that were too negative. So far, this rule has allowed the community to put a small increase on gas and sales tax and diverted funds from the hotel motel tax to revenue for this village. I still shop in Westmont. Gas prices are not any higher than any of the other neighboring communities, and unless my wife has a different idea, I won't be staying at any of the hotel or motels anytime soon. The concern is trusting you, the village board. It's no big secret that on occasion, we haven't seen eye to eye. But I look at you, the six, seven, including the mayor, and know that you have this village's best interest at heart. If we lose home rule, we lose the power of our local government to govern. So I ask you, do you trust those in Springfield enough to make decisions about this town? Same government that owes our school district $300,000. Do you trust a government that you don't have immediate contact with, where you can't show up at a meeting like this and face one of you immediately and be heard immediately? Do you trust a government who has produced two of its previous leaders who are now behind bars? I disagree with some of your decisions and policies, but so far, you've not given me any reason to think that you have abused the power of home rule. You haven't in the past five years. What scares me to death is that we have an issue in this town where a lot of residents don't really care one way or another. They don't read the papers, they don't watch the meetings on video, and in many public meetings, the number of trustees or school board members outnumber the audience members. There's a certain self-interest group out there passing out pamphlets with wording to scare the public into a panic, that taxes have risen to astronomical numbers since this was enacted, that you seek, and that you seek world domination. There's been one group that has been affected by a home rule authority, and that is a group of landlords who now are licensed by the village to ensure that their units are safe. This rule allows the village to perform inspections to ensure that a family of 12 is not living in a home built for two, that one unit is not supplying power to others but using extension cords.
Mr. Flauwman.
Yes.
I'll have to ask you to kind of wrap it up real quick.
Sure, certainly.
Do you have a time limit?
Certainly. This November 6th, we will be asked to cease home rule, a program that many didn't even know existed. If we don't come together as a combined body to vote not to cease it, then those with special interests will potentially cost this village $2 million. For those of you who have not felt the effects of the home rule, you will be, you will, beginning November 7th. How we get the $2 million lost? Will they be coming to the homeowners? If not, what will be cut? Will we have to do something with our brush? Or more devastatingly real, will we have to be forced to give up one of our fire stations, 20 less officers, or how about our seniors? Will they have the ambulatory care?
Hey, I'm sorry, I have to...
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Vote no, please, this November 6th. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to reports. The mayor has not left anything this evening. At this point, I do not have anything myself, so we will go into the clerk, please.
I just want to remind everybody that tomorrow is the electronic recycling at Ty Warner Park, so if you have things that have to be discarded, tomorrow is the day to take them up. Do we have another one in November?
Goes through December.
Goes through December? Okay. You have that many months left. Also, a thank you to our new Canyon burgers for their soft opening tonight. We all got to taste their good hamburgers, and I wish them the best. Bill is so energetic and such a good asset to our community that I encourage everybody to go down there and try his hamburgers. They're very good. So, other than that, I don't have anything.
Thank you. Attorney?
Nothing today. Thanks.
Okay. Village manager?
Thank you. Just a couple of things, keeping on the theme for just a moment on home rule. Want to mention that there is another public presentation this Saturday, 2:00, at the Westmont Library. So, would welcome a great number of people attending, if they have the time, would like to come and hear the presentation. Would also like to mention that we'll be making, or I'll be making, the presentation again on Monday evening at the board meeting. Just a couple of things I wanted to respond to from the first open forum comments. The comment about being able to shift monies from the hotel motel fund to the general fund, setting a dangerous precedent. I just would like to remind the public that we have laws, and we have to follow, there's certain accounting practices. And I'm not sure what was implied by that statement, but we would follow the law. The other thing I wanted to mention is, and I think, a couple of comments this evening actually kind of reinforced this, is the issue of the police pension fund. Why don't we wait till 2040? Well, the reason we don't is because, and I think you'll see this across the state with local governments, unlike the state government where things just get pushed off to the next set of folks that are going to come into town, I think local government has a track record of trying to address the problems and try to be responsible in terms of what their responsibilities are. I guess that's the simplest answer to that question. The other thing, the other couple of things I had was, we've got a supplemental purchase order list that I'd asked that we could add a purchase order on. This was talked about this week at the Public Works Committee meeting. It's for a vendor for display sales corporations. Involves holiday lighting. The total dollar amount is $8,960, and I asked that we could add that to the agenda for Monday. Wanted to mention that the finance ordinance dollar amount tonight is $1,039,867, and point out that the reason it is this high is, the last meeting, you approved a couple of purchase orders for a vendor called A-BEEP, related to the police and fire radio system. I'm not going to list them all, but the main ones. The biggest one is DuPage Water Commission, you know, 200 and some thousand that we have to pay for our monthly bill, our curtsch ambulance service, as well as our waste management bill. Those are the biggest chunks of that number for this month. And then the last thing I had was a request from Bethel Lutheran Church. They're doing a, let me sure I get this worded right. They're doing a sock drive to provide socks to people in need this winter through DuPage Pads and People's Resource Center here in Westmont. And they have asked permission to put a collection container here at the village hall and one over at the train station. And I don't know that we necessarily have to grant permission, it's not really solicitation, but I know I talked to the village attorney earlier this week, and that was your thinking at that point, we just kind of want to...
I think it requires board approval because it's, you know, it's a not-for-profit use, but it's on public property. You guys should have some ability to revoke that permission also.
Okay. So can we add that to the agenda if that's agreeable to the board? There would be two locations. Like I said, the benefactors of this is the DuPage Pads and our own People's Resource Center here in Westmont. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Trustees. Trustee Nero.
A couple of things. I just, again, just to repeat what our clerk said, Canyon's soft opening was fantastic. It's a great addition to the south part of town. I mean, it was immaculate, brand new, and it's really, really good food, so I encourage everybody to go and try it. Bill runs a great shop over there, and it really is a great addition to our town. The next thing is, as many are probably aware, we have the State of the Village dress, and I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that. The village staff, I thought, really did a good job at explaining both Ron, Spencer, Shannon, and Steve. Really did a good job. I thought it was a good presentation. That kind of was very informative and let people know that maybe not follow everything so closely what's going on in the village. I thought it was very useful. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Clubenow?
Just to add to what trustee Nero had said, caveats to that, that's a great opening, soft opening. The people were in training, and I think they did a fantastic job for the crowds that they had to put up with. Unbelievable. So I just want to say kudos to them. If that's how they're serving now, I can just imagine when it gets to a normal pace. It's going to be fantastic. Just want to remind people that tomorrow night is the silent parade. It begins in Hinsdale at 7:00 p.m., so within about 10, 15 minutes, it should be going down Chicago Ave. So please, tomorrow night, if you can, get out there with flashlights if you'd like and show support. Other than that, I would like to add on to the trick-or-treat trail being on the 27th. Please be careful. Again, it's from 11:00 to 1:00. Kids will be out, they're going to be crossing the street, it's going to be very, very dangerous. They'll be in costumes, so I'm asking the residents to, you know, keep that date in mind, especially that time, and be very careful for our children who are out there trying to enjoy it. And wish everybody a happy Halloween on the 31st, and, because we're not going to be on until the 1st, so it's my chance to say it. And again, on the 31st, be very, very careful with all the kids out there with those costumes. They can't see. And turn your lights on to give them some light out there on the stoops so they can be protected. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Seneca?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. Wanted to, again, congratulate staff on the State of the Village. It was a very well put together presentation, and it makes me very proud to be part of this board, and especially even more proud to live in this town. So they did a great job, a lot of hard work. Also, wanted to remind everyone that the bazaar, the world famous Maze Lake Bazaar is this weekend. It'll be Saturday and Sunday. Saturday, it's from 10:00 to 4:00, and Sunday from noon to 4:00. They have wonderful buys there, it's great, they have wonderful bakery items. It's a major fundraiser for them, and they're trying to raise money to get a second bus for the, for this, for the home. So that would be great if you could go out and support that. Canyon's was wonderful, you know, I echo everyone's comments. And then I wanted to mention, you know, we have so many wonderful businesses in our town, and I stopped in Cake in a Box last week, and I hadn't been in there yet. It is a cute store. They'll put together a T-shirt for you while you wait. It's really, really nice. They, try to go in and at least check it out. It's, they've got great, great product in there. Also, La Petite Suite was on Channel 9 News today. They did a cooking demonstration for gluten-free. They're launching their new Lea P. gluten-free business, and it was nice to see Westmont represented on the news. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Trustee Scott?
Nothing this evening, sir.
Thank you. Trustee Emery?
A couple of things. First of all, I, too, was very, very proud of our department heads that, and trustee Seneca, who spoke last night at the State of the Village. It was, it was really, really well done. And for those of you who missed it, my immediate recap is, building permits are up, all the graphs show things going down and heading up. So that was a very, that's the State of the Village in 30 seconds, is what was down is going up. So it was very, very impressive and very good work.
It was.
I do need to address one factual issue that seems to be brought up, either with, it's either misunderstanding, or it's just plain selfish and ignorant, and I don't know which side it is. I hope it's misunderstanding. This whole issue of funding the police pension. To say to people in this village, and I'm going to unfortunately do what I am so good at, which is, Mr. Finance Director, I'm going to need a number.
Get your phone out.
For those of you who didn't see the State of the Village, a question was, a very intricate question was asked about the budget, and Spencer Parker, our finance director, last night pulled out his...
Big tablet.
...little phone, and, you know, it's got a screen about two-inch diameter, and he's like, I'll get it, I'll get it. And he did, very, and he's doing that again. Anyway, the question is, if we were to wait, I shouldn't say we, because I'll be lucky if I'm around, but if this village were to wait the 23 years or so on a police pension fund in Springfield that's not due until, say, 2040, and how dare we make payments now, wait until it's due, what's the number that would be due if it ballooned and we waited to pay it till 5:00 o'clock or even 11:00 o'clock and 59 minutes before the due date?
Do you have that many zeros on your phone?
I don't know that I do. Right, I'll give you the numbers I do have. Right now, the amount that is sitting out there is unfunded, that needs to be paid off over the next 30 or 40 years now, in addition to the amounts that accrue each year. Right now, we've got about $21 million that needs to be taken care of, and the actuaries assume 7% interest, so every year, we don't make the payment. In addition to what we already have, we accrue an extra 7% interest. So 7% interest each year, right now on $21 million.
That's a lot of money.
And that's a lot. Additionally, beginning in the year 2015, we have to start making contributions, and if we don't, the state will begin taking money out of our sales tax and any other source of revenue they give to us. So we don't have the ability to simply postpone it and wait for it, and the longer that we do, the worse shape that our fund gets into. And right now, we're already at $21 million that we have to pay out. And I think the board made a very wise financial decision several years ago when they made the determination to begin funding at the levels the actuary recommends and requires so that we don't pass on that huge tremendous burden to future generations.
And I think it's fair to, to explain that we are not the only village in this situation. I mean, most pension funds are funded at, what, about 62, 65% right now?
Yes.
Yeah, so I mean, it's not just a Westmont issue.
And we went higher so that there would be no rollover debt, and the reason, thank you very much, the reason that I bring this up is because, and perhaps it's really terrible of me to call it the attitude selfish, but if you're not going to be around when that thing comes due, it's easy to say, wait and pay it, when I'm, you know, why worry? But imagine our new homeowners that we've attracted to Westmont, and in 23 years, their kids are just getting out of college, and we go, guess what? In addition to probably each year of college then costing $21 million, you can pay another $21 million for a plus 7% per year accrual, another $156 million. And to put it in perspective, our entire annual budget is around $30 million, 35. Or middle-aged residents now with kids in grade school or high school, and they're looking at retirement, and all of a sudden, the village goes, our bill has come due, and these people are like, how the H are we going to pay it? So whether it is some type of miscommunication or misunderstanding, this board is not going to pass on that kind of debt, period. So thus, the decision to make the payments now and make them higher than what we are required to do, so there is not that massive debt to the next generation. So those are my two cents.
Can I make two additional comments as to, you know, how do we get to where we're at? Well, you know, we have, I don't know if people realize this, but police officers are able at retired age 50 and 20 years of service. That's statutorily what happens across the state. Everybody knows about the boomer generations being the largest generation. We're seeing a lot of retirements that we have over the last few years, and so suddenly there's an increased burden on pension funds. An interesting statistic the other day, this is not going to be a problem that even if it's solved for this generation, because the millennial generation is even larger than the boomer generation. So you couple that with, and we talked before about these unfunded state mandates over the years, the legislature has passed and increased benefits, you know, and basically said to the municipalities, you're going to have to pay this. So you put all those things together, that's where the financial pressure has increased over years.
Right. So the voters have to decide if what we've done is abuse, that's just, that's, and whether they trust that what we're doing, and so that's what we're facing. So those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim.
One more thing to add, there's a special meeting on Monday, October 15th, at Village Hall at, I'm assuming, 6:00 p.m. for Administration and Finance Committee.
Yes. 6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m. in the, is that in your session room?
Yes.
Monday night.
And I would like to say, I wish I could have been there last night, but unfortunately, I had to work last night. I'm hoping to look at the replay. I'm sure that Lynn will take care of that. I did hear very good things about it and heard that everything went real well, and I wish I could have been there, but unfortunately, I had to work. Just piggybacking on a couple of things real quick here. I think the residents of this village are smart enough to realize that what we do, we do in the best interest and try not to burden them in the future. Adding on to the comment that trustee Emery made, coming in 23 years, imagine the people sitting in these seats at that point in time, looking at a bill coming due at $21 million or...
We won't be able to understand it by then, so that'll be okay.
It'll be too convoluted, and it'll be too far gone, but, no, I think that, I think that our voting constituency in this town is smart enough to... I think that, I think that our voting constituency in this town is smart enough to realize these things and I hope that they realize that a lot of what is going out there is partial truths and look at all the actual factual things and investigate this and please vote on November 6th. That's all we can ask. And that's all I have.
Can I add one more comment? I'm not trying to be the doomsday person here, but we're concerned about these costs now. And the next really big issue, and Trustee Scott and I were talking about this the other day, you know, we've already seen significant increases in the water. Water internationally is going to be the next super scarce resource that is in a number of areas already in the world. So, if we think costs for other things are gonna be expensive, that's gonna be a big issue. And I would almost bet within 23 years, you're gonna see some pretty, so there's gonna be a lot of different financial pressures that this committee's gonna be dealing with, as many other committees down the line. So, just things to think about.
That being said, on we go. Items to be removed from the consent agenda.
I just have a question, not necessarily, I don't think it has to be removed, but on the minutes, I was not in attendance of the special events. Would I still be able to vote on that even, because there was no, at least the other ones, I can always review the videos. There was no way for me to hear or review this.
Well, as long as you reviewed the minutes, you can vote that as far as you know they're accurate.
Okay.
But you're voting to approve the minutes as substantially accurate, but the fact that you weren't there. And that's okay.
They could put anything in the minutes and I would have to approve it then because I have no idea what they discussed, so that's why I wasn't certain.
You could have answered it.
Okay. As long as it can be there, then that's fine. Thank you.
Any other items?
No.
Okay. Southwestmont Business District Public Hearing. Board to consider ordinances for the Southwestmont Business Tax Increment Financing District. Number one, to fix the date, time, and place for the public hearing. Two, establish an interested parties registry. The eligibility report and redevelopment plan and program for the Southwestmont Business District are completed. Tesco and Associates recommends moving forward with this process. Staff requests the date of Thursday, December 13th, 2012 for a public hearing at the committee of the whole meeting. In addition, law requires village to pass an ordinance creating a registry of interested parties maintained by community development.
Good evening. I think that you've done a good job of summarizing why we're before you this evening. As a matter of course, we're required by law to set the public hearing date and that date has, again, been established for December 13th at 7:00 PM here in this room. And we also are creating the interested parties registry. By law, we're required to keep that as well. So, upon the approval of these ordinances, if they are to be approved Monday evening, you'll be able to pick up the registration forms here at Village Hall and we should also have those available on our village website. With all of that being said, our consultant, Con Savoy from Tesco Associates, is here this evening and would be happy to answer any questions about those formalities. And I've also put a copy of the map exhibit that we have here on the podium as well.
I think maybe the public might want a little bit of clarification of what the registry of interested parties is. And what that pertains to and how that's handled.
Yeah, it's simply an opportunity through a formal process established by ordinance and then forms that the village will have that gives residents the opportunity to sign up to be notified of all future meetings, information, and so forth. It's just a way, basically, for people to keep up to date in terms of all the information, public hearings, notices, and so forth relative to the TIF process.
So, basically, it's get involved. Okay. We have any questions or anything at this point in time?
Well, the hearing, the ordinance will establish the interested parties registry and set the date, time, and place for public hearing. Explain how far along it is, whether now it's a take it or leave it, whether things are still subject to change, where things are. And also, kind of, you could introduce yourself for people watching at home. Thank you.
Yes. Good evening. I'm Con Savoy, Principal with Tesco Associates and the prime consultant assisting the village in the preparation of this TIF district. The process at this point, in fact, is still fluid and I guess that is what you would somewhat expect, given the fact that we're not at a public hearing yet and even up until the public hearing, there can be changes made and even after the public hearing, there can be changes made. As many of the board members and some of the citizens know, there's been discussions with the school districts, other taxing districts relative to the size of this TIF district and any other potential agreements associated with how this project moves forward. However, having said that, we felt it was in the best interest of the village largely to capture what would be an entire tax year. If we got this done early next year versus later next year, you would lose basically a year in potential tax revenue by establishing the district late. So, it wouldn't obviously be advisable to do that if we could avoid it. So, we are moving in good faith along with those discussions with the other taxing districts. We felt that enough time had been spent, good progress has been made, and we felt it was important that this process, meaning the establishment of the eligibility along with the plan and program, now move forward per the schedule. And of course, as everyone knows, it doesn't lock the village in. All it does is set a schedule for a public hearing. At that time, the board would hear more testimony and comments from the public and then make a decision if it decides to move forward or not. Obviously, there's no guarantee that it will.
Okay. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you.
I just wanna make sure too that the public understands that we have a comprehensive study going out there, plus this, and it's important for the residents to understand that you are working with them and constantly working together. And if, you know, so they understand that we're not spinning our wheels and putting money here and then finding out comprehensive said something different.
That's an excellent point, Trustee Klebenow, and the consultants have been working very closely together and we're facilitating everything to ensure that that occurs so that nothing is in conflict with recommendations of either consultant.
Anything else? Then I guess we can set the date to December 13th. It's not a problem?
Not a problem.
We'll vote on that on Monday.
Okay. I will vote on Monday.
Yahoo.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Next. Neighbor's Publication Agreement. Board to consider an ordinance approving an agreement with Emerald Marketing, Inc. to provide for the publication of a bi-monthly local news magazine.
This was an item that was approved previously by the board to consolidate our village newsletter and calendar. We had a kickoff party here a couple of weeks ago, kickoff event graciously hosted at the BMW dealership. And we had talked, when we first talked about the concept of switching to this publication, that we would have to come back before you with an actual contract with the company. And that contract, I believe, has been reviewed by the village attorney and that's what the item is this evening, is to consider approval. The different taxing bodies and entities that are involved that have to pay for their space will be executing their own separate agreements with Neighbor's Publication.
Okay. Any comments? Questions? No? Okay. Moving on to new business. Variance request for 430 South Linden Avenue. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following request from Tiffany Tang for zoning code variances to allow existing driveway to be resurfaced and a new rear yard paver patio. Number one, lot coverage greater than 35% maximum allowed. Driveway to encroach in the side yard setback. A reduction in minimum required lot area for an existing non-conforming lot. Good evening.
I did not know we have projectors, so maybe kinda awkward, but please be patient.
Just put them on there and it'll come up for us.
Yeah, thank you. I'm Molly Tang, going to present the property of 430 South Linden for my daughter Tiffany. She has examined this tonight, so she is not able to come. The reason why I want to bring up these projects are as follow. The driveway is cracked, there are many holes, and the asphalt is uneven. Those anomalies cause some problems such as, one, icy holes during snowing days. The driveway became extremely slippery, which is not safe for people walk on. Two, the water back to the house when it's flooding season, it's insanity. Three, the whole driveway has deteriorated badly. This reflects poorly on the community. There are the reason why I'm asking to resurface the existing non-conforming driveway which is encroached into the three-foot side yard setback. The reason I'm asking for a permit for variance are the nature of the existing condition is not suitable to comply the current code because neighbor's lot is higher. Okay. Let's see. Two, there is an existing brick wall that block the dirt from the neighbor's lot. That wall need bricked side yard to support the wall. The bricked side yard is about one foot because the neighbor's fence is over my property. This is private line and the fence is over about two foot over. In order to let the water flow, we need to remove the portion of backyard bricks to replace them with permeable bricks to lower labels so that the water won't be blocked. Putting back permeable bricks is conflict the current minimum 35% coverage of lot size code. That is why I'm asking for variance to reduce the minimum required.
I will say that planning and zoning did recommend unanimously approving the zoning code of variance request. The chairman noted that the side yard setback has exceeded throughout the neighborhood and would not create a new non-conforming, or new non-conformity.
No, it's in, you know, existing non-conforming driveway. It is.
Questions? Comments?
No. Staff had some requests, I think, with this about some removal of some items.
Yeah, remove the, because the current non-existing, the, what is that? The deck, the side, it's a regular bricks. So, it's higher. It's like one foot higher. So, we take it out, make it a label. So, we replace them with a permeable bricks. But it's still over 35% the code.
And I think there were some pallets and other items that had been a part of the recommendation to be cleaned up.
Right. So, I'm going to, yeah, clean up the garage, surrounding garage.
Good.
Mrs. Tang has made a concerted effort to work through all of the staff comments that have been kind of flushed out through the entire process. She's provided revised plans. She's swapped out for the pavers as she just mentioned a moment ago. So, there's no net increase. Unfortunately, this was a non-conforming property.
We have a few of those in this town.
It'll look nice when it's all finished. Be very nice.
Just a comment. Because these variances are all interrelated, they were drafted up under one ordinance, if that's okay? If everyone's comfortable approving a single ordinance for these, if you so choose.
Yep.
Anything else?
Now, this is one that...
It's a no-brainer.
It's a no-brainer on this one.
Mm-hmm.
But it proves the system works.
Sure.
Yep.
Yes, it does. That's why we've got it this way.
That's why it's there. Thank you very much. We'll be voting on Monday evening.
Thank you.
And then the staff will notify. Okay. Next. Downtown Development Grant, 143 South Cass Avenue. Board to consider an ordinance approving downtown development grant request from Bob Sonoa.
Good evening. Tonight, we have Rob Sonoa, the son of the applicant for the downtown development grant. The facade grant, excuse me, the facade and downtown development grant committee met on September 19th and discussed the improvements that are planned, including siding, windows, a new front door. The recommendation was to provide a grant in the amount of $3,920. That was to include all of the Cass Avenue facade improvements. It was felt that the primary frontage was really the intention of the grant award. So, that reflects, the number that I read reflects the improvements on that side, which is the west side of the building. Feel free to add anything I may have missed.
That pretty much covers it all.
Okay.
I have a question. That according to the rules and regulations of our grants, work can't be started before an improvement agreement is approved by the board, that if work starts, it's not eligible for a grant. And isn't this where Cash Closet was gonna go in and all the siding has been off for how long with Dave Wisprock's sign in front?
Yes. You're correct. The property was going to be leased by Mia Curtis of Cash Closet. That lease is no longer in negotiations. At the time that the work commenced, I think there may have just been a little bit of confusion between the potential tenant and the property owner. They were both interested in potentially co-applying for the monies that are available and initiated the work. And I just think that maybe a ball may have been dropped. So, the village staff contacted the owner and explained, you know, that the work cannot go any further unless you have received the grant money if you intend to apply for it. So, that's kind of why it's been in hiatus for a while. And Mr. Sonoa, feel free to jump in.
Right. I mean, that's exactly it.
Well, I'm just wondering, because I know that there have been people that started work and they were turned down. And I'm just trying to be fair to everybody. So, that's why I'm asking the question because I know that the rough-out of, you know, we want a window here has been there for a long, long time, as has Dave Wisprock's sign. So, I don't know how we distinguish that work didn't start a long time ago before the grant was even applied for, let alone issue.
I think maybe the question would be, what is your estimated time of completion of the improvements? Probably, my guess would be a month or less.
I mean, even with the grant, it's not gonna sit for another six months or till spring the way that it is now.
John, I'll jump in and ask you a question. Would it be reasonable to add a timeline for the work completion?
Of course. You can impose reasonable restrictions, limits, whatever.
Christmas?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's 45 days.
December 25th.
Right. Yeah. I mean, we definitely need to get it done before the bad weather sets.
Okay.
Shannon, can I just ask a question? The amount of the grant, again, was?
So, the total amount that was recommended was $3,290. The total scope of the improvements included all four faces of the building and so the total improvements over $21,000.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
All right. So, we're setting a 45-day...
Is that doable?
45, is that, is that a... Yeah, I mean, material's been purchased and, you know...
Yeah, I saw the receipts from Menards and such.
Okay.
Okay.
Everybody in agreement?
Yeah. Sounds good.
Thanks for fixing it up.
Thanks for fixing it up. Thank you.
Gotta look nice.
See you on, we'll vote on Monday evening then. Thank you. Next. Massage Establishment License, Heavenly Feet, 151 West Ogden Avenue. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following. Increasing the number of massage established licenses within the village from eight to nine to allow the issuance of a massage establishment license to Heavenly Feet at 151 West Ogden Avenue. Two, issuing a massage establishment license to Heavenly Feet at 151 West Ogden Avenue.
Good evening. You have before you a two-part agenda item. Number one, where the board must decide whether it wishes to increase the massage establishment licenses by one to allow license to go to the applicant of... licenses by one to allow license to go to the applicant of Heavenly Feet who are here with us this evening. And then if that passes, for the board to decide that they want to issue a license. I have given you our review, including some information from Deputy Chief Gunther, and have given you a cautious preliminary approval for the issuance of the license. However, the board must first decide if they wish to issue or increase the licenses from eight to nine. And I'll, the village attorney...
May I, may I ask a quick question? Go ahead.
Quick clarification, I'm sorry. The agenda reads, increase the number of available licenses from nine to ten.
Nine to ten.
That was typographical error. It's from eight to nine.
Okay.
And the agenda on Monday will reflect that.
Okay. My quick question is, I read the background investigation. Do you need more time to get answers to certain things that we should postpone this for another set of meetings? Do you need more time? Because it seemed as if you were trying to get answers to background information, and I wasn't quite sure that you were comfortable with everything that you got.
The postponing, no. The difficult issue that I'm hung up on is the education of the massage therapist. She went to school in California, and so everything I'm doing is over the telephone. I had a sergeant from the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department go, physically go to one of the school's locations to verify. He contacted me back, it's an empty storefront, so there's not much more I can get. I think I've pretty much tapped out all of my resources for digging up any additional information on the schools.
Can we verify that there ever was such a school? Can we...
The school existed, yes.
So we can verify that?
Correct.
And that, that is...
The problem, my issue is the reputation of the institution.
And was a license granted based on that institution? Was a license granted either in California or here?
Here, yes. California, no. She never applied in California. She went, she resides in Illinois. She went to California for training. She came back to Illinois, and she is licensed through the Illinois Department of Financial and Professional Regulation.
And the state and the agency for the certification here for Illinois for education will take no action.
I think we made a number of eight for a reason. You know, at this point here, I'd like to leave it at eight.
If I could by way of back one additionally, it is capped at eight, has been that way since 2009. The board made the decision to cap it at eight so as not to have a, as we do with liquor and tobacco licenses, a overwhelming, one type of business in the community. On Ogden Avenue, there's a massage license establishment and an incorporated area by Ogden and Williams. And we have currently an applicant that has had an application on hold since December because she's had some ownership issues, and she's currently in court trying to get sole ownership of the business, which we found out after she applied for, has an application. And that is right next to Jimmy John's and between Jimmy John's and Dairy Queen, approximately five hundred, six hundred feet away from where Heavenly Feet would be located.
She could massage the Jimmy John's guys running around. What, what do we precisely license? The establishment regardless of the number of massage therapists or each massage therapist?
The massage, it's the massage establishment license. The therapists have certain requirements by ordinance that they must meet, and one of them is to have a state license. And so we, the answer is we have licensed the massage establishment, not each individual employee.
The state has exclusive jurisdiction over licensing massage therapists.
I know, but I mean, what I'm asking is, our licensing, our business license, does it go to each, not whether or not they can be a licensed therapist, but the business license, does it go to each therapist? Like if there's three, that's three of our licenses, and it's the, you know, obviously establishment. So in our little burg, we have eight establishments already.
Yes. Do you have the file?
Mm-hmm.
Of the location? We have, no, no, hold on. We have eight, and I can get you the locations of the businesses of each eight. That's what your next question was.
No.
Yes, we currently have eight.
I know where they are. I drive around, I see signs, I pay attention. I'm not for increasing the number of licenses. I think eight because of, our commercial districts are mainly along three roads, Cass, Ogden, and Sixty-third. And I think eight licenses is sufficient, as far as I'm concerned. But others...
Can we listen to the, you guys, let's hear what the owners, or potential owners want to say, and what they're going to describe their business to be before we beat them up a little bit.
Did I not understand reading this, that there was something about the size of the place compared to how many can be working?
Yes.
Want me to handle it?
Yes.
Yeah. The massage establishment ordinance dictates that if there is a, one bathroom facility...
Oh, the bathroom, yeah.
Yeah. If, then there can be no more than five people in the establishment. And also, the massage establishment license also says that you must have one manager and one massage therapist during normal operations. So you have to have two employees. So that, that chews up two of your five people. So presumably, you could have no more than two customers within the establishment at any one given time, because you already have two, two of those allocations for bodies by the, by the owner and the massage therapist.
So if you had two massage therapists and a manager who didn't do massage, does that still count as three employees? So you could, okay.
Right. The massage, the manager cannot be the massage therapist. You have to have two people. And if, if they were to add a second bathroom, which would then nullify that requirement, that would require the entire space to be sprinkled, which the building owner's not willing to put out the cost for that. So any, any major demolition or renovation triggers that sprinkling. And we, I talked to Mr. Young, Kim Young, who owns the building, which is where the judo studio is, and he's not willing to, to make that modification within the...
So they're caught between leaving it as one bathroom and limiting their customer or going to a second bathroom and having to have it sprinkled?
Yes.
So again, I'd like to hear from the potential business owners, if they want to describe what their business is going to be, and so we can get a real good idea. Because the name, I actually read it wrong when I first read it. I thought it was Happy Feet. There's one of those in Villa Park.
Yes.
That's a movie.
That's a movie.
Anyway, and my point is, though, that it's not what I think you might expect. I've never been in the one in Villa Park, but my older brother has. And I remember him calling me, and this is a really funny story, but he called me afterward, he said it was the best experience he ever had. He said it was a good value, and it was a very nice place. So I'm just curious, before we, you know, everybody seems to be against it, but just curious what it is and what you plan to do if you've, you know, if it was approved.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. My name's Gloria. I'm actually here to help them translate. He is the applicant, Jen Sito, and this is his wife, Li Qing Wu. And so they're husband and wives, and I actually just met him on the streets one day. And then, well, anyway, it's a coincidence that, anyway, he basically asked me to help him to, you know, look for a location. And I said, oh, I know this area, I can help you out. And so anyway, that's how we started. And then, so I've been helping him in the process, application meeting with Mr. Gunther several times, calling over the phone. And Jen had worked actually in Happy Feet before, the one in Villa Park. Seems to be Villa Park. Yeah, Villa Park. And then Li Qing is actually working in, it's actually foot massage, but the real terminology is called reflexiology. So, you know, it's basically just massaging the feet, and then with the fact that it actually reflects to different organs of body. So it's actually, you know, has that healthy benefit. It's more of a wellness concept. So if you want to see it more like, you know, people are doing nails and try to feel good about it, well, now you can, they're not doing pedicure. It's different from pedicure, but it's massaging. So, yeah, it's basically what it is. And, because Jen and, they have actually been in, how many years in the business, Jen? He has some experience in China, he's over ten years. And then here in America,多久? Three to three-year plus, almost four. And then because he has seen how Happy Feet was doing, and is doing pretty well. And actually, in Donald's Grove, there's this other place called Feel Good Feet, I believe, by Seventy-Fifth and Le Mans. And he actually, you know, I told him, you go check out that, that would be your competitor. And so that's basically what it would be like. And we actually went to this location by Mr. Kim because it's a smaller, manageable. And for him, it would be the first time being a small business owner. And so he want to start slow so that it's more manageable. And for them, they actually don't need too many people to break even, and as long as they can, you know, schedule it. And then two of them, probably just one or two other therapists, and rotating the schedule, that would get them good started. And Mr. Kim actually liked the idea too, because he said, oh, my students would love to come. And then not to mention across the street is the suburban bowl, the bowling. So I'm pretty sure some people probably, you know, find that relaxing as well. And so if you have any questions for them, I would more than be happy to translate and have them answer any concerns you have.
You know, it's sort of a fine line for me in that I believe there are nail spas, you know, that do manicures and pedicures, that also offer reflexiology for both hands and feet. I don't know how we differentiate, but I'll bet we have some in town. I'd be surprised if we didn't. So it's kind of a fine line. I've also heard of chiropractors having people that do reflexiology. So we might have doctors in town that offer this service.
Or they're exempt.
Oh, they're exempt, right. Thank you. But, you know, so I guess, is it massage or is it, you know, is reflexiology true massage? When I think of massage, I think of massage.
Reflexology is...
You know, hot stones, you know.
Hands and feet.
Yeah.
Everything else requires you to be a massage therapist.
But does it, but does it truly fall under massage? Or is it considered more medicinal?
I guess it's a massage license, I think.
You do?
I, I thought so, but I'm not sure about...
Well, I thought they were also going to have potential customers in a, in a chair and giving them back massages. Is that correct?
Yes, they would be...
Okay, so it's not just feet and hands, it's the whole nine yards?
Yeah. But I believe their focus is on the feet, because that's what they have been working in, the places that are focusing on the feet.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, I, I guess a question with the, with the body massages, are those proposed to be like in the, in the massage chairs that you see sometimes in office buildings or in shopping malls? Were they're full closed?
And then sitting on that chair.
And sitting on the chair? Or are these, do you want the ability to perform all types of massage?
They all wear clothes. And then, is it, I think Mr. Gunther had told us that we cannot have partitions. Initially, he would like to have more of a little room for people to do back. But you, you say it's not allowed?
No, it's allowed to make a partition that's not affixed to the wall.
Right.
Because we can't change the structure of the...
It can be immovable.
Right.
And so that's what he understood, and that he would be, you know, so that it's a little privacy if someone's lying down or someone's got feet up, that type of thing. But, yeah. So it would be something like what you see at the malls.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yes? And we will vote on Monday evening. Thank you.
What's staff's recommendation?
As you have in the review, Deputy Chief Gunther's recommendation is to deny my recommendation after consulting with staff and council, is also to give a cautious approval.
It's a cautious approval.
They are bound, the chief in making recommendation is bound by the requirements in the ordinance, which is, does, do the massage therapists have a state license? Does the facility comply with the building code and other building requirements? Are there any felony or other criminal convictions, et cetera? And they technically pass all of the background checks with some concerns that were raised. So he, the chief feels obligated to give a recommendation, but there were some concerns, particularly about the educational requirements, that the school no longer is a...
And along with the indication that one applicant previously admitted to Deputy Chief Gunther that he has performed massages without a license in the past, and that was a concern.
Gloria, would you ask them how many massage therapists they intend to have work there? Because if somebody's doing feet and somebody's doing shoulders, how many are going to be there?
Maximum two.
Okay, thank you.
Which, again, reads the question of occupancy. If you have two employees, only allows two customers. Our concern is that no one would be able to come and sit and wait, because if they actually are servicing two customers, and the massage manager per ordinance is required to be on site. So that's only allow one person to do a massage unless the manager has a massage license, which is not the case at this point.
Thank you, sirs. Thank you.
Okay, next. Holy Trinity Church Oktoberfest 2012. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following two requests from Holy Trinity Church for an Oktoberfest event from 11:00 a.m. to 10:30 p.m. on Saturday, October 20th, 2012. Number one, closure of street parking spaces and sidewalk areas on East Richmond Street, west of Linden in front of Holy Trinity School. And two, issuance of alliance and license for the amplified sound during the events. Yes, gentlemen, how are you?
How you doing this evening? We're here tonight because Holy Trinity Church is throwing an Oktoberfest, October 20th. And we were thinking about closing the street, but with the help of Larry here, we've realized that it would probably be more advantageous to keep the, the street open there for parking and just for people to get by. But what we were looking for was for the noise permit. We do have a band, a German band, that will be there, but we only have them play until 10 o'clock. We didn't want to go past 10 o'clock, just because we didn't want to upset the neighbors. Where we have the stage located is actually away from the houses and points towards the school and the park district. So that way, as the sound goes on, it should be transferred that way and not even near the homes.
So you're withdrawing number one, the closure of the street?
That's number two.
Um, yes.
Okay.
Well, actually, that's parking spaces. So there won't be any street closure, but the parking spaces that are on Richmond...
So they're still going to do that?
Yeah, we'll still do that. This is Keith Sellers, who's a volunteer at Holy Trinity Church. I figure I know most of you, so...
We see you at church.
Any questions or...
No, sounds like it's going to be a great event. It'd be fun. Yeah.
Hopefully, good weather.
Yeah, please.
Something we should announce as well is, they will be continuing the snow plow painting project. So Streets Division will drop off two plows, and so the community, children of the community are invited to come and paint.
Oh, that'll be fun.
All right.
Children, Steve.
I was going to say, I get my paint ready.
I said, children, Steve. They can paint, not Steve.
Next. Downtown Trick or Treat Trail, 2012. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following two requests from Westmont Chamber of Commerce. Sponsored Trick or Treat Trail event on Saturday, October 27th, 2012, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. One, parking lot closure of Cass and Burlington Public Lot. And two, issuance of a license for amplified sound. I heard him say one-third of the lot is what they were asking for. Now there's...
Yeah, because when Al Carson was up here, he didn't say they wanted the whole lot closed. That was my understanding. Larry, do you know?
In all of my conversations, it was the south, one-third of the lot, and as it was last year.
That's how the ordinance reads, consistent with the write-up and what was approved last year.
So can Monday, since we're voting on it on Monday, can the agenda show that it's parking lot closure of one-third of the lot?
Any other questions or comments?
No.
Moving on. Inter-governmental agreement, Village of Westmont Community Unit School District 201. Board to consider an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Westmont and Community Unit School District 201 for the purpose of providing security at the school board meetings.
Evening again.
It's chief.
School District 201 had an agreement with the... School District 201 had an agreement with us several years ago to provide security here in our village hall for their school board meetings. They reapproached us again and wanted to start up having an office where they're meeting. And in doing so, we visited the agreement to make sure that everything was fine and found that it had lapsed. We have been providing the services under the auspices of the agreement, you know, the restrictions of the agreement. And asking for the board tonight to consider to renew the agreement with school district. School district did not have on their agenda this week, but they will have on their next upcoming school agenda as well.
Comments? They feel they need it, they need it.
Yeah. I've got an aside.
Chief, I have a question, just in terms of payment.
Yes.
Forty dollars per hour for each hour part thereof, is that consistent with what we charge for, say, the Taste of Westmont and the Red, White and Barbecue?
We have a set side job rate or extra duty rate of pay for our officers, which is forty dollars without a squad car. And that is what's set. So Taste is a little bit different because it's an overtime payment for the officers, not the flat duty, not the extra rate of pay. This is the flat assignment that's been agreed to with the FOP and what the village charges other businesses. Such examples were car dealerships and we provided security for the car dealerships.
But that's usually an off-duty officer, right?
Yes.
So if this is an officer that's on duty?
They will still be billed.
It's still forty dollars an hour?
They'll still be billed, yes.
Okay. But we won't get into an overtime situation with this?
No, it would be, right now, it would be if someone from the street were to come in and fill. I've had discussion with our school resource officer, Detective Wibler, and he showed an interest in picking up this detail. And it would dovetail perfectly into his duties as a school resource officer.
Great, thank you.
You had an aside?
I had an aside.
Okay. Does that like have a vision?
No, it's like a side note.
Okay.
So I talked to the chief, I talked to Ron about the fact that I believe the village needs an ordinance regulating conduct at public meetings and public hearings. Something that the police department and who's ever chairing a meeting, a public meeting, can use to, you know, keep control of public meetings. And it's a somewhat sensitive area because it involves First Amendment rights, but you also have the right to have orderly meetings. And courts traditionally uphold local ordinances that impose reasonable time, place and manner restrictions on speech. So if someone gets off topic, off-agenda topic, if someone violates a time limit, if someone is unduly argumentative or threatening or using obscene language, the chair has the right to ask that person to sit down. If they don't, the police can ask them to leave. And if they refuse, they can be arrested. And then we have an ordinance to use as a basis of prosecution. Right now, the police department is reliant on state statute, which doesn't provide a lot of clarity unless there's a clear threat of violence. Disorderly conduct just isn't something that really holds up in court. So we've researched this, we'll bring it up for your consideration in the next agenda or two.
I'm glad you brought that up. We talked about this, that institute when I was down at the training. And Ansel Glink were advising all of us to do that.
I just spoke at the American Planning Association Conference in Champaign on this issue, in part addressing the unruly public during public meetings and what you can do.
I guess my question is, and just toss this out there, we have a three-minute limit set upon comments in open forums in here. I guess my question is, is three minutes really enough? I mean, could it be increased to like five minutes?
Please, plenty.
And I would say this...
I think three is plenty.
I'm just asking the question because, I mean, it's...
That's what Ansel Glink recommended there and there too, was three minutes.
Can I also say though, there's a couple of different levels, because there is the open forum request where someone can speak on virtually anything. And you can have a three-minute time limit for that. But then you have the agenda items. For example, when there's a variance requested or a, let's say, a complicated planned unit development, people come to these meetings and want to speak to the board under that agenda item. Perhaps you have a five-minute limit, which courts have upheld as legal, if it is an agenda item where someone speaks. And then you have public hearings before the Planning and Zoning Commission and whether, you know, they want to feel like a restriction is necessary. And those have been upheld too, if they're reasonable.
The thing that I have to tell you is that, you know, I speak to many police departments and many village officials, and the chief always goes with me to help with the fielding of questions on the topic of preventing violence against public officials. And it discusses all of the things about when the police can act and, you know, your ordinance and all that. And I've done that presentation for everyone but my own board. So we can, there's a lot of other factors that we can put in for John to come up with our ordinance. In addition to the time limit, there are other things that will, you know, give the chief and/or deputy chief, who's ever here, that they can act on as very clear guidelines for people that come before.
And we've got a whole list already put together. Anne Marie's actually drafted the ordinance already for me to look at, but it includes things like member of the public shouting at someone who's at the dais speaking. Or someone wanting to talk about the budget up here when we're talking about a rezoning item, just not on topic. And those are all ways you can ask a person to sit down.
Jen, is there, can there be verbiage included to talk a little bit about repetition? You know, if you have a...
That's also...
You know, where, you know, 10 people want to say the exact same thing, but 10 slightly different ways?
That has been upheld by one of the federal courts in one of the, one of the federal districts.
So we can get that in there as well?
Yes.
Good.
Although someone really is allowed to go. Because that's non-threatening and it's just as an example, I just thought I'd point that out.
Right. And we've always, we've talked about it here, and I've talked about it with the chief, that...
Like they did at the debate.
...are on the side of caution. And the best thing to do is take a break, let everyone cool down, don't kick someone out unless you really have to.
Yeah. Good.
As we talked about too, we do have some guidelines, which is included in this agreement, but we do have guidelines. It would just help us, give us more clarity and better direction, as well as inform the public as what's acceptable or not.
And is this something that, I realize it wouldn't apply to other taxing bodies, but perhaps...
It would.
It would.
You know, they don't have to, they can adopt their own rules and procedures if they want. But this is an ordinance that would not only apply to the village, but some of the rules of conduct if there's a breach at another public meeting. I'll have to look how that works, but the police could use that as a tool.
The police could use it as a tool?
Yes.
But other taxing bodies would not be bound to follow. In other words, if they decide they want, they want to say you can talk for five minutes at open forum?
Certainly.
They're not breaking the law?
I think the way this is broken down is there are specific procedural rules that apply to the Village of Westmont, this board, for example. But there are general rules of conduct of a public meeting that would apply to...
That would apply across the board?
Yes.
Gotcha. Good.
Threats of violence.
Great.
It's sad that we got to do that.
It would give the, it would give the officer...
It's very sad.
Sad.
Yes.
The capacity to do with the short circumstantial...
One of the things that a lot of other boards of many types do before their open forum, and when you hear it enough, you're like, yeah, yeah, yeah. However, for people that show up once every year or something to say something and maybe they're angry is, they read a little thing about, open forum about, you know, here are our rules. And in addition to the time limit, they say that we expect you to be polite and respectful of others and all that. And it's kind of goofy, but it reminds me of, you don't stand up there and, you know, like rant and that kind of stuff.
It's kind of like what I read tonight before we got started.
Well, it's right on our agenda, but people don't look at that.
Yeah. I think we should have a little clock that, you know, when they get up and talk, Jen just hits a button and it starts going so they can see their own time. And then there could be a big old hook here by the chief, so they know to pull them off.
At the State of the Village last night, at the State of the Village in the area at the junior high, there's a sign about, what would you say it was, about five feet, five, three feet?
Big.
Said, be respectful. We could have one of those. And they have to have it at the junior high to remind you, right above the cafeteria lady to be respectful.
Right.
We can joke about it.
I think we need it.
Great, thank you.
I'm glad we haven't needed it very often, I'll tell you.
So I mean, is that something that everybody's in agreement to?
Yeah, definitely. Sounds good.
Yeah. And you also can use a hook, you know, at three minutes, it just comes out and yanks them away from the podium.
Glenn could put the Jeopardy music on when the time is starting to run out.
Yeah.
How about I'm standing on a box and just open it and...
That'll work.
Apologies for the sidetrack.
No, that's okay.
No, I would like to...
I mean, it's something I think that probably needs to be talked about for quite a while, and I appreciate you bringing it up.
I was just talking to Ron about that tonight.
It was a good aside. Yeah. We were just talking about it.
Good aside.
Okay, great.
Okay, moving on. National Community Planning Month. Board to consider an ordinance proclaiming October as Community Planning Month in the Village of Westmont.
Why? We've been community planning for months. Why are we clearing October?
That's for the ones who aren't planning.
For the future, we'll only do it in October.
Okay.
We're going to change that from an ordinance to a motion. We don't need an ordinance approving a proclamation.
There's actually, yeah.
We are working on, you know, it's like, we are working diligently, so we don't need a month to do it.
I think on Monday, we should invite, I think on Monday, we should invite our acting community development director to read the proclamation.
Sure.
Yes, I think from now on, department heads should all have proclamations.
Yes.
Because how many times do they get to say whereas?
I like that.
I'm going to start counting.
That's a good idea. Do you have a copy of the proclamation?
I think that's a good idea, too.
Yeah, it's right here in our package.
No, 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 I'm asking...
She's got it, she gets the package.
Okay.
I'll start practicing.
We'd like you to memorize it, please.
I have one right here if she needs it.
Okay.